Just a little update, we've decided before we get started. We will now have work session 83 come after session 81. So we will go from the high school ESOL pilot programming to world language based on instructional materials. It's a little bit more time sensitive. And then in case we get to the end of the day and need to reschedule work session 82, we'll do that at that time.
I need somebody to come back into the room. We need to have Quorum.
I got it.
Okay, that makes Quorum. We're gonna go.
Good afternoon, board members. We're very pleased here. We have with us our two principals, Ms. Lavery, Ms. Gross, who are gonna be able to answer some questions and talk to you about this great work. Dr. Presidio and Mr. Pollio are here. Mr. Pollio will be leading us through our presentation today. We're really excited here. Again, the purpose of this presentation is to provide you with an update and to let you know what's been happening in this great exciting work with our high school ESOL pilots that we've had at Stewart and at Lee High Schools. As I presented in our strategic plan update, I said we'd be coming back to you to delve a little deeper into this. And we're really excited to share with you what's been happening. And also, at the end, to be able to share with you our ideas and our plans moving forward for how we will expand our newcomer programming for next school year. And also, some plans for how we can continue to make sure that this particular subgroup of students is getting the education that they need, having the equity that they need, and making sure, again, that we're seeing student success. As I presented also in the strategic plan, when we talked about our achievement gap, if you recall back then, you dug a little deeper, and if you looked a little deeper, and some of you asked questions about this, one key area that is driving our achievement gap for us is our limited English proficiency students. And that cuts across all of our subgroups. So when you think about, for example, our SOL results last year, where we had all of our students, our district-wide average, at 85 percent. If you look at some of our subgroups, our black subgroup who are LEP, 25-point achievement gap. Our Hispanic group, 31-point achievement gap. Our white students' LEP, 18 points. Our Asian, 12 points. So crosses all of our subgroups when we're looking at limited English proficiency. That's the reality. But the good news is that we're doing some great things about that, and we're seeing an impact in these two schools. So while we know our reality, we're also excited that we've been able to put some things in place to start to change that trajectory and move it in the right direction. So Mr. Pollio, again, is here. He's gonna lead us through a short presentation. Then we have our principals here. And we also are excited to have some teachers who are in the back who can also share with us about the work that they've been doing at our two high schools, because we feel it's most important, certainly, to hear from us, but more importantly, to hear from those that have actually been doing this great work. So with that, I will turn it over to Mr. Pollio, who's gonna walk us through.
Okay, thank you. It's a pleasure to be here. So we started last year on this journey around the same time, about in January of last year, we talked about, and I know we've shared about this, the Dear Colleague letter, which is some guidance from the U.S. Department of Justice, Department of Education, Office of Civil Rights. We focused on two areas in our programming that have access to core curriculum for English learners and creating a pathway to graduation. And that means that if an English learner enters ninth grade with beginner-level English proficiency, the school district should offer English learner services that would enable that student to earn a high school diploma in four years. We also want to make sure that our English learners have access to grade-level curriculum so that they can meet promotion and graduation requirements. At Lee and Stewart this year... Thank you. Okay. This year, the numbers of students that are involved in our pilot programming at Lee and at Stewart. At Stewart, we have 105 students in our pilot programming of newcomer, our newcomer pilot programming. At Lee, we have 172 students. The reason why the numbers are different is because at Stewart, we have a cohort of approximately 105 students that are only Level 1 students, and those are the newest of our newcomers at Stewart. We went with that model this year. At Lee, Lee is working with, in their programming, they have Level 1 and 2 students. So that's why the number's higher at 172. Stewart actually has more total English learners at Stewart. There is a total of approximately 180 Level 1s and 135 Level 2s at Stewart. All of those students are enrolled in English 9 this year, and all of Lee, Level 1 and 2 students are also enrolled in English 9. We, when we started looking at what type of programming that we would develop, we, our office in working with schools and with instructional services, we developed five guiding principles. Those are, first, that language and content would be integrated, and that content and language objectives would be present in all lessons for English learners; that we would have culturally responsive classrooms so that teachers can make connections to students' background knowledge and prior experiences so that learning is meaningful and comprehensible; we would have a caring culture where we had comprehensive services made up of school staff and the community, including family engagement, parent education, reunification support when necessary; and we've also added, and I'll speak a little bit more about this later, an English learner family partnership specialist at our entry assessment office, which has helped a great deal. We've also need to make sure that our students have access to rigor, meaning that there's a course sequence and curriculum that provides that pathway to graduation and also develops attributes of a portrait of a graduate, which we've developed. And lastly, that we have collective responsibility and collaboration at our schools, and that teachers work together in teams and take collective responsibility for student learning, particularly of our English learners; and that the whole school community takes responsibility for the education of our English learners, not just ESOL teachers, but also general education and content teachers. So we've developed our high school newcomer program design is made up of primarily three main components. The first is, sorry, I have to wanna make sure that what I'm looking at on the page is behind me. The first is sheltered instruction. And that means that the courses are specifically designed for English learners, that instruction is designed to simultaneously develop English language proficiency and the content understandings. So both language and content are included in the sheltered classes. And sheltered instruction is designed specifically for English learners, so most of those classes have solely English learners in the classes, in our sheltered classes. English language development is the second leg of the tripod, and it's important that our instruction is aligned to the WIDA English Language Development standards, that instruction provides targeted language development in the four domains of reading, writing, listening, and speaking. And third, we know we had to add newcomer socio-emotional supports, because so many of our students, particularly at the high school level, come to us as new English, as English learners, as new students, and new students to Fairfax County. So we need to provide comprehensive supports, for example, creating a welcoming and safe environment in which to learn. And these are some of the newcomer supports that we've added this year or formalized. In some places, they've already been in place, but we've made them formalized at Lee and Stewart. The first is following the cohort model, so that teachers and students are working in cohorts, creating small learning community. Teachers have common planning time, both for their content area and as an interdisciplinary team, so that teachers that share students have time to talk about student progress together on a weekly basis. Second, we have our Strategies for Success class. This is a new class for English learners this year, based on a class that was previously in existence in FCPS. And it's a good, it helps to transition to U.S. schools for our students. It focuses on executive functioning, study skills, has some responsive classroom structures to it. And there's a lot about, there's a lot of learning about technology in this class, as many of our new English learners don't have as much experience with technology. And it's teaching habits of mind. Third, at Lee and Stewart, we have a bilingual counselor who can work specifically with students and families, specifically with those cohorts of students, to help them adjust to school and be that connection between teachers and other supports in the school and in the community. Fourth, we have CIF intervention supports. CIF students are students with interrupted formal education, and those students sometimes need additional time for learning, additional time for literacy. And so we've provided some literacy for students that have significant gaps, and I'll talk a little bit more about how we just choose those students in a bit. We also have a dedicated parent liaison for our newcomer cohort. We have a newcomer team leader at each school at Lee and Stewart who has limited or no other teaching responsibilities. Those team leaders, who you'll hear from later, have, provide job-embedded professional development. They help new students transition into the school environment. They serve as a link between the teachers and the counselors and coordinate services with our office that we can provide on-time professional development. And then also, we have coordinated services. So, for example, we have bilingual social workers, school psychologists, and the L Family Partnership Specialist is our specialist in entry assessment, who's able to look at particularly students that are 18 years and older, able to look at transcripts, able to decide what's the best match for these students, and ensure that if it's not at the base school, that we have, that they are successfully can begin a transitional ESOL high school or Fairfax County adult, depending on their level. The central office supports that we've added this year consist of, first of all, L consultations. This is our dual-language assessment and consultation team that works collaboratively with schools to make sure that when students are struggling, and I'll give you the process in a moment, but they help consult with schools to decide if students truly need additional time for learning or interventions, or if we just need to shore up that Tier 1 instruction. We also have started the CIF code in SIS, and I believe I might have talked about this at a previous meeting. In the SIS, we have, we've identified students, and this is based on what families tell us, but it's a code SF that identifies students that have two or more years of interrupted education in their educational history. Those students may or may not need a great deal of additional services. However, at least schools now have a heads-up to know that these students may need additional services because they have been out of school for some time. We also, as I've talked about, the L Family Partnership Specialist is that link between family and schools. Reunification support, which is primarily done by Office of Family Services, provides families that are experiencing reunification, provides them with counseling and with supports of how to best reunify their families. And then, of course, we have job-embedded professional development. We've given frequent feedback. Our office has worked week by week with school staff this year to ensure that staff have the materials, instructional strategies that they need. When it comes to our students with interrupted formal education, we realized early on that not all, just like any student group, any subgroup or group of students, not all students are alike. So we would have to have a clear process for schools to decide upon what supports that our CIF students needed. So it starts with classroom teachers, of course. They may identify that a student is struggling and bring that to their collaborative team meeting on a weekly basis. The collaborative team then decides if they need additional information, that they can request an L consultation. And at that L consultation, a member of our dual-language assessment team comes to the school, talks with the teachers and the team about what they're observing in a student, and then a determination is made as to whether or not to design an intervention plan for that student. Here's some data about our CIF supports and what we've done this year at Lee and at Stewart. So the first, the top row at Lee and Stewart, we define newcomers as English learners who were new to U.S. schools as of July 1st, 2015. So Lee, there were 85 newcomers, and at Stewart, there were 141. Of those students, 20 at Lee and 56 at Stewart were identified as CIF students. Those are students that had two or more years of interrupted education. Of those students, we then had L consultations for 20 students at Lee and 16 at Stewart. So those were students that school teams, teachers and teams identified as, you know what, we're not sure how to support this student. We need help. So they, our dual-language assessment team collaborated with them, and from those students, we identified six students at Lee, had five students at Stewart that qualified for an additional period of literacy support. So we've initiated that support, and it's a process that we're working on. We can talk, and I think the teachers can probably speak more to exactly what's happening in these support groups, and we're working on this process as we move forward next year. This is really the first time that we've tried something like this this year, and so far, it's, it's working. So I wanna tell you a little bit about the student successes that we've had at Lee and Stewart this year. First of all, our students are gaining credit, standard credit toward graduation. So we have 94 percent of Level 1 and 2 students at Lee and Stewart are on track to receive English 9 credit this year. 95 percent of Level 1 and 2 students at Lee and Stewart are on track to receive Social Studies credit this year. That is not something that has happened in the past, and so we're very excited about that. I'll also note that from behavior, and principals can talk more about this, but in-school suspensions at Lee and Stewart have been down. They've dropped from 54 in 2014-15 school year to 32 in, so far, in the 2015-16 school year. And that's just from the first half of the year, 2014-15, measuring apples to apples, first half of the year to first half of the year. So here's ultimately why we're doing this programming and what we feel, and some data about where we currently stand with our graduation rate. So as Dr. Duran mentioned earlier, there is a large gap in our graduation rate. We currently are four-year, this is our four-year, five-year, and six-year graduation rates for LEP students, which is now, the subgroup is officially changing to English learners as the name. So 65 percent of our English learners in Fairfax County graduated within four years, 73 in five years, and 73 percent in six-year cohort.
And the reason Rich is gonna talk about, the reason is, it's really impossible, under a traditional model, it's impossible for them to graduate in four years.
Yeah.
And that's why this program is so important. It's gonna be talked about in just a little bit, around why we have to change the sequencing of courses to enable these particular students to graduate within four years. With no changes, it would continue to be impossible.
That's, that's correct. That's why the slide we showed earlier, Slide 11, about students, our Level 1 and 2 students who are receiving English credit this year, and Social Studies credit for the first time is so key. It's no longer just elective credit, it's credit that's gonna count toward graduation. So here's specifically, a little bit more specifically, what we changed. In our traditional model, students, our ESOL students took literature and content classes for elective and world language credit. And as Dr. Garza stated, now in our pilot, our students are taking English 9 for English learners for English credit, and they're taking government for Social Studies credit. So they're taking, and there'll be more on the way with content courses that they can take for content credit. Our traditional model built background knowledge related to the content, and now, thanks to our teachers who've worked so hard on the curriculum, the courses are aligned to grade-level standards and the WIDA English Language Development standards, including language and content objectives. Our traditional model had optional and inconsistent implementation of balanced literacy, which is, you may hear in our elementary schools, is the, the model of literacy instruction for our students, focusing on reading, writing, listening, and speaking. That's in our ELD class. And now, we've required implementation of the balanced literacy in our ELD class for all of our Level 1 and 2 students, and students earn one world language credit for that. Traditionally, our students took one math class, and now they're taking a double block of math. They have math every day. And traditionally, schools were doing, many schools were doing a fantastic job of introducing our newcomers, having them have a safe place to be and feel comfortable, but these were informal supports across the division, and each school sort of fending for themselves. Now, what we've developed at Lee and Stewart, we think we can bring to scale across the division, and we have real, more formal supports for our newcomers in the form of our Strategies for Success class, the counseling support, parent liaison support, and that cohort model, which allows students to build relationships and teachers to build relationships with their students. So some other good news is that we did survey our students this spring in a student satisfaction survey. Over 90 percent of students in the newcomer programming at Lee and Stewart agreed that school was a good environment for learning, that teachers were encouraging and helped them if they have a problem, that they know who to ask when they need help, that they're learning to read, write, speak, and understand English, and that they enjoy coming to school. One area for improvement is that students indicated that participation in school-wide activities was an area for improvement for them.
I wanted to emphasize this, again, like I did at LT. This is very important, because these are students that are at high risk for dropout, high risk. So if they're saying they enjoy coming to school, they feel like it's a good environment for learning, they have a great relationship with faculty and teach, all of this is very important to how they, how they feel will have a big impact on whether or not they come to school. And so this is, I think this is real important.
So we also asked teachers who are working in the program at Lee and Stewart, what did they think the impact on student learning was for their programming this year? Teachers said that student focus on academics had increased dramatically, that students feel more supported and comfortable in their learning environment due to the cohort model, that students understand their own progress and self-reflect and are self-assessing using performance-based rubrics, and that the Strategies for Success class has impacted students' organization skills and overall independence. Oh. Sorry. I just read that slide. So we also asked teachers, what do you think the impact on your own instructional practice has been? And teachers reported that they feel that they're holding students to higher standards as a result of having high expectations for all students, that they have increased teacher collaboration to ensure student success, that they're using multimodal approaches to make learning accessible for students, and that they're working more closely with Student Services and the Student Services team to support individual students, and that would be their counselors, social workers, school psychologists. So that's what's happening at Lee and Stewart, and this is our plan for our next steps, our plan for high school ESOL expansion. So in the visual on the right, I wanna show you that the newcomer school within a school model would be present at, at some schools, and I'll go over that list in just a minute, but the English learner pathway to graduation is for all schools. And so here's the difference between the two models. First of all, the newcomer school within a school model, a main component is that cohort of students with dedicated interdisciplinary teacher team that, and at the, in the English learner pathway to graduation schools, they may not necessarily have the numbers of students to have those cohorts, but they would have individual student placement decisions based on ELP and content readiness. Both schools would have credit-bearing courses aligned to the SOLs and the ELD standards. And the focus of the newcomer school within a school model for those cohorts, the focus really is on those Level 1 and 2 students. And the pathway to graduation model, that course sequence, is for all of our English learners. I'm gonna show you two models, one for Level 1 and, two sequences, one for Level 1 and 2 students, and one for Level, for higher-level students. These are the schools that we feel would be a good match for the newcomer school within a school model. Annandale, Edison, Falls Church, Herndon, Mount Vernon, South Lakes, and West Potomac. That's in addition to Lee and Stewart, where we're working now. These schools are projected to have 12 or more ESOL teachers and have at least 60, anywhere between 60 and 200 English learners, just at the Level 1 level, so those beginning English learners. The main feature for these students, as I said previously, is that these schools could have cohorts of students that would be on smaller class sizes with room to grow, because we know each of these schools also gain many students throughout the year. And as I'm sure Lee may, may talk about, and Stewart, those class sizes, we started them lower, knowing that students would be coming in in October, November, December, January, March, and what's today? Today is March 14th, so there could be students entering today. Our other schools, we divided into medium and smaller programs. The medium programs have six to nine, projected to have six to nine ESOL teachers with about 20 to 50 Level 1 students, and the smaller programs have five or fewer ESOL teachers with 0 to 20 Level 1 students. These students may not be able to cohort students, but can offer the courses, just like Lee and Stewart have this year. Teachers may not be able to have common interdisciplinary planning time, but they will certainly receive the same professional development from our office that Lee and Stewart have this year, and that all of our newcomer school within the schools will receive. We would like, the best-case scenario is for students to stay in their base school, so that's why the programming moves on to all schools in the county. And all schools, whereas I mentioned earlier, the newcomer supports, for example, Strategies for Success, and having bilingual counselors, and dedicated parent liaisons. There's nothing to exclude our medium and small programs from having those supports. It's just a question of, it's gonna be a school-by-school decision to decide whether or not they would be necessary based on their school population. So this is the four-year sequence, if you are an English learner that enters school as a Level 1 or 2. Credit accumulation starts in year 1 with English 9 and a Social Studies class. Students take English Language Development, as I said earlier, which is a balanced literacy-based class, and they receive world language credit. They have a double block of math if needed, and I'll go over the math sequence in a moment. They take Strategies for Success, which is sheltered just English learners, and they choose an elective. Science is not included in year 1, but science is introduced in year 2, and we've been working with Lee and Stewart staff on the year 2 sequence, deciding on what type, what science exactly will be offered at those schools. As you can see, year 2, year 3, and year 4, all credits that students will need are included up through year 4. It doesn't mean that all students will graduate within four years. For example, if students take individualized math in a double block their first year, it may take them five years to graduate because they'll take all their math. If students were to not start English 9 until the second year, it would take them at least five years to graduate. This is our math, current math placement for levels 1 and 2, how the double block works. The most supported is to the left, and the least supported is to the right. So all students come in as a Level 1 or 2, just because your English language level might be beginning level, doesn't mean that you don't have different math abilities coming in. So some students are in a double block of individualized math. So this is pre-algebra. This is all the math that they would need to learn to be prepared for algebra. So that first year, they're just in individualized math, if that's what they need, if they're on a lower-grade level of math. Next, some students are in individualized math and take Algebra 1 Part 1. Others are in Algebra 1 Part 1 and Algebra 1, so they have that support for algebra. And others are in Algebra 1 or higher, so they might be in geometry, and they might not need that double block. Again, we have to look at each student individually to decide what's best for them. This is the four-year sequence if you enter as a Level 3 or 4, because you could be new to the United States but still be a Level 3 or 4 when you arrive. And this is really not much of a change from what our current sequence is, although we've added English Language Development as a support to English 9. Depending on the level of the student, English 9 could be teamed, or it could be sheltered. So some Level 3 students, these are what would be our recommendations, that our Level 3 students would be sheltered altogether in an English 9 class. Others, as you get to Level 4 and beyond, they could be teamed with their English-speaking peers. So these are some considerations for professional development and staffing. Our ESOL staffing is designated for sheltered instruction, ELD, and for team teaching. This year, we're providing a praxis prep class. In fact, currently, we have approximately 40 ESOL teachers that are in a praxis prep class to prepare them to take the English praxis over the summer. If they pass the English praxis, they'll then be dual-certified in ESOL and in English. Our goal over the next few years is to have all of our high school ESOL teachers dual-certified in ESOL and another content, whether it be English, social studies, science, or math. We do have, because we've introduced the government class this year, we do have, we are going to be running a praxis prep for social studies this summer, and so we anticipate that that'll be well-received. We hope to have a large number of ESOL teachers take that course as well, so that they can then, it's prepping them for the praxis, so that they could become certified. Other considerations is that we know we need to provide a lot of professional development and good professional development for our sheltered content teachers. So these are our math teachers, our social studies teachers, our English teachers. So not just our ESOL teachers, but we need to teach those strategies that work with English learners to all of those teachers. And that's a big task, but we know we have to do that over the next few years. We also know we need to recruit more bilingual counselors, because this is an area where if there's a bilingual counselor at a school, particularly in Spanish, but there are other languages that certainly we need across our county, that this can be a big boost to the social-emotional progress of our students. And certainly, we need to recruit ESOL teachers and those sheltered content teachers who are going to teach our Level 1 and 2 students. I know there have been many questions about our older English learners, so I've included some information, some current data about our English learners that are age 18 to 22. Currently, at Lee and at Stewart, our Level 1 and 2, that's our beginning-level English learners, we have a total of 45 students between the ages of 18 and 22 at Lee and 96 at Stewart. Those are students that are ages 18 to 22. Included Mountain View and Bryant's on this list. And then in all high schools, there are 209 Level 1s and 340 Level 2s. At Transitional ESOL High School, you also have the data there of 98 Level 1s and 45 Level 2s. Now, not all of these students, I should say, are students that entered Fairfax County as an 18-year-old. So many of these students have been entered at age 17, 16, 15, 14. And as Dr. Garza mentioned earlier, so one of the reasons why we feel the need to change the programming that we have is because our students who are age 14, some of the students that we have in this group of, I guess it's a total of 549 students between the ages of 18 and 22, some of them may have started at age 14 with us and, under different programming, could have graduated by age 18 or 19, but are still in our system because they haven't had the credits to graduate. And we included this slide to show who has entered Lee, Stewart, and all of our schools as 18 years or older this year. So in this year, you'll see the numbers, that the actual numbers of students, Level 1 and 2 students that were age 18 or older that entered Lee this year and were placed in Grade 9 was zero. And placed in Grade 10 or higher was Grade 4. That means they had some credits when they came in, they had six or more credits. At Stewart, you'll see zero in Grade 9, 5 in Grade 10 or higher, and a total of nine at all schools placed in Grade 9, and 38 placed in Grades 10 or higher. 82 have gone to the Transitional ESOL High Schools. And this is actually consistent over the last few years, that while we did see an increase in that 2014-15 school year of students that entered our base schools as students that were older, over 18, our work now is to provide good adult programming, Transitional ESOL High School and Fairfax County adult programming, so that when our English learners that are Levels 1 and 2 enter Fairfax County, that we have a solid high school programming for them that isn't necessarily at the base school.
And this we heard as we were studying with the design for the new, for this newcomer pilot would be, I know Tammy Dearnet, Kofax, and Sandy Evans visited some schools with quite a number of folks. But we heard from principals also that there are students enrolling 18 to 22 in the base schools that they really didn't have the kind of supports they needed. So the, I think the, helping that when people enroll, children enroll, students enroll, that piece that you mentioned earlier in the presentation, I think has really been a game changer on this, and that is counseling them to the right, to the right program. Would you agree with that, Rich?
I would definitely agree. I think the L Family Partnership Specialist that's paid for through Title III funding, because it is a supplement to what we do, that person is, has experience in counseling, in high school counseling, in being a DSS. That's the type of person that we feel we need in that position, that's able to make a good connection with students and families and make, and be that link between new, older English learners and the different school options that we have, so that they can be placed where they're going to be successful and where schools feel they can be successful with students. Because we also know that this is a challenging population to work with, and schools have, you know, shared that with us and also doing the best they can. But having that person, that position, I should say, having that position at entry assessment has been very helpful.
And then the final thing on that is, I think moving down the road, we're going to have to maybe explore, how do we have more access to the Transitional ESOL High School moving down the road? And so I think there've been some conversations with Jeff Plattenberg and some others, so we recognize that, you know, that is something that, probably something we need to put on our list to also keep working on. Is that correct, Rich?
Yeah, that's true. In fact, Dr. Duran and I are meeting with Jeff on Wednesday, and so we're actively looking for sites and places where we can have more Transitional ESOL. That's the, that's the schools that are for our level, older English learners, Level 1 and 2.
One thing I want to also emphasize before we have our principals and teachers speak is, a couple of questions that we hear often, is this a one-size-fits-all approach? And having met with high school principals and talked with them, how are we going to do this in all of our schools? We cannot do all these things. This isn't a one-size-fits-all approach. The key here is making sure we provide access to the core, and that is something we want to see in every single high school. Then the second key is equity and support. That might look a little different depending upon the high school, and you see the list of those two slides where we indicated some that would have the newcomer school within a school model, where you would see somewhat of a very similar approach to what you see at Lee and Stewart. But for the medium and the small schools that were labeled on that particular slide, Rich, Mr. Polio and his team are meeting individually, one-on-one, with each high school principal on those lists to determine what would best fit the needs of those communities, with the caveat that there must be access to the core for all students, because that is a driving piece that has caused students to be on a trajectory to six, seven, eight years or 18 to 22-year-old in our system. So while that piece is a non-negotiable in terms of making sure students have access to the core, what does that look like? It's something that we're individually doing with each school, and I know a couple of board members who have schools that are on that list have asked, well, what does that look like for my school that may not have, you know, 100 students, maybe only has five or six? Are you going to ask them to now have all these resources and it's going to pull away resources from other students? No, that's not what we're asking. We're asking and saying that we must have access to the core, and we'll work with you one-on-one, and that is what Mr. Polio and his team are doing, whether it regards to master schedule, with regards to other supports. We're going to look individually, school-by-school, for those in the medium and the small, but for those that have the large numbers of, you know, as was indicated, up to 60 to 200 ELL students or 12 teachers or more, we can provide a more prescriptive type of program that we've seen work very well in Lee and Stewart. I just want to emphasize that because that's been a common question. I certainly have received a lot of comments about it, I know Dr. Garza has as well, so I wanted to clarify that point, too.
So I think this is, I think, described as kind of a loose-tight model, and I want to point out one more thing to what you were just saying, Dr. Duran, and that is, both of these pilot schools, their programs are even a little different. So we're trying, you know, and I really appreciate, Rich, Polio, you and your team, and Sloan and others, that you all have really been flexible with high schools and really working through their unique needs, making sure that we have the important parts right, but also providing some limited and appropriate flexibility.
And real.
Just want to be mindful of time. So if you don't mind, I was thinking we could go to the questions and have the principals provide answers to that.
Absolutely.
And then if there's anything additional, you can add that. Okay, perfect. So we were going to have Yilong, Tammy, and then Sandy.
Thank you. This is exciting. As a former ESL student myself who came to this country in the middle of high school years at the age of 17, that there are so much that I can talk about, you know, these issues, but I don't want to monopolize board's time, so I'm going to limit my comments and questions to just a few. For sheltered classes, how different those sheltered classes be from regular classes in terms of content, intensity, support?
So, yeah, the sheltered classes are linked directly to the standards. So students are learning all the standards. So in English 9, they're learning every single standard, the same standards that our general ed students are learning in English 9. What is different is the level of the students, for example. So they might be reading books at their level, text at their level. There might not be the breadth, not the breadth, the breadth of writing in that class, but the classes, students are learning exactly the same standards. So they're learning how to analyze and talk about fiction texts, how to analyze and discuss nonfiction texts. It's the same standards and the same in the government class. So in our government class, everything is linked directly to the standards. So whereas students may not be writing five-page papers about government, students are still learning all the, every little facets of government. It's actually a great match, and I've talked with our team about how they think it's a wonderful match for our beginning English learners, because they're learning so much about just the branches of government, learning about local government. They have a lot of background knowledge from their own countries, so there's lots of connections that they can make. So whereas the level of the students' English is different, the standards that they're learning, the expectations that they will show mastering those standards is the same.
So for the students who are being placed in these sheltered, let's say, English class, are they also taking our traditional ESL classes as well at the same time? Or is that going to be, as a sheltered English class is going to replace ESL classes?
It's not, it's not replacing. They're doing ELD as well, so they are, the English 9 class is combined. So the English 9 class itself is rich in sheltered strategies and rich in reading, writing, listening, and speaking and language development. They also have that additional ELD class, English Language Development class, which is more similar to a traditional-type ESOL class. That's where students are gaining, there's specific instruction for, for students to gain English language proficiency.
Okay. 42 years ago, that's when I came to the US, long, long ago. I don't quite recall whether there was an assessment test for my English, you know, ability. There might have been, I just don't, do not recall. But if I need to go back and try to maybe gauge my own ability, I might have been for listening and speaking possibly Level 1, reading potentially Level 2, writing might have been somewhere between Level 1 and Level 2. So the, in your ELD classes, you may have a students, different students with a different needs in different areas. How do you accommodate or how do you differentiate your instructions to meet the needs of students?
That's not really unique just to English language learner classrooms. I mean, we have that in any classroom in the county, but I think one of the things that we recognize is that the students in these classes, Level 1 and 2 students, need so much additional support, that we try to keep the class sizes lower than we do in some of our other classes, so that the teacher actually has more time to be able to individualize and differentiate for the variety of student needs. And I was just going to add on the question that you asked earlier, one of the things that we're able to do to help students meet the content standards is because we're giving students more instructional time and support in that extended block, the English 9 class connected to the ELD class. Those two classes really basically seemingly integrated, give students more time and more opportunities to master writing, listening, speaking, and reading. So that's one of the things that we're able to do, and we're doing the same thing, of course, in math, to provide that extra math class for students at Level 1 and 2 levels to be able to get that initial level of success that then we can build on as they progress to Level 2 and Level 3, and we gradually release those supports as they don't need the same intensity of support.
Okay, just one more. It's a comment and question. This is the last one. This is the last one. You know, again, going back to 42 years ago, I was in the city of Alexandria, not too far away from here, probably, you remember that that's the beginning of ESL instruction curriculum in the United States, at least in the state of Virginia. At the time, very small class, but at the same time, I was able to go to all regular classes. They allowed me to be, they were not necessarily sheltered classes, but teachers understood my needs and allowed me to be in their classes, be able to do whatever I can do. I mean, there were a lot of things I couldn't do, but they let me have an opportunity to try to learn in their regular classes. I'm not necessarily advocating for those. Our sheltered classes might, you know, satisfy those needs, but here's the thing I'm trying to get at, isolation. I was in, I was being fully immersed in the regular class setting. Sheltered classes may not be, may not provide that setting. You talked about one area that we need to work on, we need to improve upon, is engaging school-wide activities. That's where many of our ESL students do not get to participate, because probably they lack confidence in going to those activities and participate. There, where I got the most benefit, from my own experience, was I had native speakers as my regular friends in my school. So I did not have to be in complete isolation. But that's not how I see us happening in many of our schools. For our students, for the obvious reasons, when they have language barriers, they feel uncomfortable in engaging native speakers. But whether we do as a part of our this program, provide peer-to-peer support?
Mr. Moon, I will say that this is actually moving in the direction that it sounds like you want to go. We are sheltering students as little as is necessary for their academic growth. We have students and we schedule them individually. So if students come in strong in math, they can go into the math class without any support that they need. We have students at Stewart that take IB classes, maybe not Level 1 students, but I think correcting this pathway to graduation is going to allow, we have some students currently that would love to earn the IB diploma, the full diploma, but because of the old sequence that we used, we really held them back. And with this new sequence, we will allow students to expedite that path much more quickly. So we are actually moving towards sheltering students only as necessary, where in the past we had at Stewart, ESL-sheltered electives. So students were not only together for that academic time, but for a lot of their elective time, and we are pushing them into the mainstream, recognizing that they do need to be around native language peers in order for them to improve their English.
Thank you. Tammy?
Just to add one piece, the other piece that we have found is the after-school activities. We now have more and more students engaging in our athletic program, and that, those connections are being made with our students about practices, simple things like, when do you need a physical? Those connections are being made through the program, the cohort of students that we have set up through the ELD, the Strategies for Success, the bilingual counselor. So we're actually seeing an increase in our Level 1 and Level 2 students participating in our after-school activities as well. That's exactly right. They have somebody that they're go-to person.
Thank you. Thank you. Tammy?
Well, thank you all for being here today. I appreciate this. I want to thank Dr. Garza as well, and our entire board, because I think when Ms. Evans and I came to all of you a couple months, over a year ago, and Mr. Moon, I appreciate what you're saying, but somewhere between where you were and where we got to today, the current system that we had in place was really not working well. And as a representative of the schools there, it took me a while to understand what was and wasn't working well. So, I then, you know, thank Dr. Presidio and Dr. Polio and for taking what we had, had talked about, and then making it a different, as well as our, but I know that those two were the ones that really initiated this programming to where we are today.
We were just joking, because I'm not a doctor.
Oh, well, see, always giving, always giving you something to strive for. So, that's, we are a learning community, so. But, and you know, and I know Dr. Lockard and his entire team, they look at best practices in other schools, not to mention driving a bus around Texas for many of us. We appreciate that very much. Ms. Evans and I went and observed the programming about two weeks ago, and we were very excited about what we saw. We saw children engaged, children active and involved, and we saw teachers with lots of energy and enthusiasm for the work that they're doing and the new things that are out there. I would ask the principals, and you started to speak to it, but just kind of give us some personalized anecdotes about the improvements you've seen on, you know, we have that on slide, as a data point on Slide fifteen. But if Ms. Gross and Ms. Laverty, you could kind of personalize that a bit.
Sure. I think one thing that Deirdre touched on, which is happening at Stewart as well, is in the past, our students weren't able really to navigate the system of participating in extracurricular activities. So, through the leadership of our newcomer teachers, we were able to set up physicals for students to occur at school. And one of the hurdles beyond the physical is paying the nineteen-dollar insurance fee, which has to be paid via a credit card, which something as simple as that is very difficult for our students. And so, we had a teacher take that on and sign students up, and students gave her the cash for them to get their insurance so that they could even try out. So, that, I think, was a huge win. The Strategies for Success class has been phenomenal in allowing our students really to engage in a safe place and to understand, I'm not sure if you got to see it at Lee, but
I did.
The program at Stewart is, I'm sure, similar to what you saw at Lee and just really giving our kids, who really don't know how to do school, a place to ask all of those questions, to really have a teacher looking out for their best interest and always advocating for them. I think another positive is that we are seeing very few behavior problems for us at our level-one, which is where we're cohorting these kids. Our behavior problems at Stewart generally come from ELL students, so you will see a spike. You know, our data doesn't show the discrepancy with our special ed students, but rather with our ELL students. And that data for level-one, those kids are really not represented in our ISS, OSS numbers, because teachers are really working together as a team to problem-solve any behavior problems or challenges that may come about in terms of impeding kids to coming to school, to being there regularly and participating. So, for me, really, the Strategies for Success class has been a huge plus. And then, of course, having a bilingual counselor. Our bilingual counselor at Stewart serves only our level-one kids, and you've heard those numbers. It doesn't quite reach the threshold that we would require a school counselor to carry at the high school level. And yet, her workload is significantly greater than every other school counselor who's carrying double the students. And that has to do with the needs of the family, the trauma that a lot of our kids are coming to school having experienced in their home countries. And she really has built just an incredible level of trust with kids, which I think is paying off for us in terms of academic outcomes and positive engaged students.
Thank you.
And I think what I would add, everything that Penny said, is the same things we are seeing at Lee High School as well, the decrease in the behavior problems. But I think the increase in the engagement overall is the piece. And when you talk to our students, and they say things like, "I'm connecting what it means to do well here to college," through the Strategies for Success class, a lot of visualization activities around, where do you see yourself five years from now, six years from now? In the past, as I talked to kids, they'd say, "I never would have thought of college, but now I can. Now, I know it's something I can achieve." I think the other positive piece that we're starting to see is, when we talk to our teachers about how our L students are doing in particularly the English nine and the social studies class, it's great conversation to have with general ed teachers who have a wide range of students in their standard-level classes. So, being able to have teachers that our teachers can go visit and see how you can differentiate and use different materials, but still strive for that standard, I think is starting to open up and have an impact on our broader teacher community at Lee High School.
Thank you.
I know we're short on time, but it's often rare that we have teachers that are here to hear their perspective, too. I know you asked the principals, but I mean, it's very rare to have them here. And I think it would be wonderful if at least one or two, if
Please, yes.
It's okay with the time, but to ask your question, I think to hear a teacher's voice is so powerful. And again, they're not always here to be able to do that. So, I don't know if Ms. Gross or Ms. Laverty, you can invite one or two up, or who would like to come?
Molly? Molly?
Hi, I'm Jessica Milliken. I'm the ESL Department Chair at Stewart. I also teach one class of the SCIF students, so I teach a support class for those five. It's actually now six, maybe seven, that we're looking at based on our new enrollment. I can't say enough good things about the way the program has worked. Our students are not only engaged, just like Deirdre and Penny both said, they're active in their learning. They make connections every single day. So, you know, when we taught the concept of compare and contrast as a ninth-grade standard, they'd already done that, because they compared and contrasted governments. And so, they're really able to make the connections between what they were learning in the government class and what they were learning in the English class. And therefore, anything you're practicing, any skill you're working on, that was really able to get applied directly from what they already knew. So, instead of just introducing a new thing, they could go off of what they were already learning in their other classes. I don't know, I can keep talking forever, but there are a million great things. I came from the middle school where we always did standards. Standards was something we always did. They always took SOLs. They did it in all three levels of history at the time. They did it in science. And they also did it in the VGLA for English standards. So, it was something that was very normal for me, coming into the high school. And it guides the students. It really gives them that path to be able to focus their instruction rather than being just fluffy ESL. And not to say there was anything bad about what we were doing in those classes. Those teachers were always really doing strong things. They just are now more guided. They have very strict standards that they follow, and they don't have time to waste. So, they just continue teaching, and they're doing a really good job at it.
Oh, thank you. Hi, my name's Kaitlyn Saxton. I'm a teacher at Lee High School. I teach English nine and ELD-nine for level-twos. I also came from the middle school. And one thing that I can say, I really appreciate seeing with the students, is that we have, middle school and high school are now speaking the same language. So, that vertical articulation is very clear. I have students saying, "Miss, I learned this in middle school." And they might be using and confusing it, but now in ninth grade, I'm seeing mastery of that. And I think that's really, really powerful. I also teach ELD. So, Mr. Moon, to answer that question, we have students in reading and writing workshops. And so, I'm targeting the instruction to their level, where in English nine, things might be a little bit more difficult. I have to find reading levels to meet their needs. But in that ELD group, I'm really targeting where they are, and I'm reinforcing those skills and working with the English, my English nine counterpart, to make sure that students are successful in both classes.
Hi, I'm Molly Pallacelli. I'm the ESL Chair at Lee. And I didn't come from middle school. I've been at Lee for fifteen years. So, I can say that I've gone into a lot of the strategies rooms with our counselor, Ashley Sherrill, to talk to the students about graduation at level-one and two. And that is a conversation that I was always very reluctant to have in the past with our level-one and level-two students, because graduation could be seven years away for those students. I have two students who are graduating this year, with, one with forty-six and one with forty-seven credits for graduation. They've been there a long, long time. So, I think I've had many, many more students who couldn't hang in there that long. They needed to go work, or they aged out, so they had to drop out. They left us. It's very rare that you've got a kid that can actually hang in there that long. So, that's what I see is really important with this programming. I was able to go into the level-one and two classes and actually, you know, show them. These are the classes you're taking now. This is where it counts for graduation. This is what you'll need to take next year. So, they actually have a very, very clear understanding of where this is going. Whereas in the past, if I'd gone to a level-one class and said, "It might be seven years from now," they probably would have quit right then and there. So, I think that this has been very good. And we definitely have seen much better behavior. The teachers were initially concerned when they were looking at the pacing of, "How am I gonna do this?" But what we were doing a lot in the past within our ESL classrooms is we were dealing with a lot of, "I don't know how to do certain things." You know, "How do I see my counselor? How do I handle the cafeteria? How do I get to my locker?" With the Strategies class, now the English nine teacher or the government teacher can say, "That's a great question. Take it to your Strategies teacher." And the Strategies teacher can handle that, so that the other teachers can focus on curriculum. So.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
And I'll just add really quickly, by teaching the SCIF class, I think a lot of worries the student, that people do have, "What do we do with that student who is illiterate?" And we do have five students that are, never have been in school before. They are completely illiterate. They cannot read and write. And that's the class that I teach. And I literally have been working with them for three months since we created the class in November. I teach them beginning sounds. We sit there, and I am teaching them. I explain it to them in Spanish, and then I teach them in English, the very beginning sounds. This is something they're taking in conjunction with English nine and ELD, so it's an extra support class. So, I will put in that plug that that is a necessary thing. It is not necessary for every student. And that, having that consultation, having that, the procedures in place to find those students. We have a very, very low population at Stewart, but they are not all in need of that extra support class. And those students will be repeating English nine. They are not gonna be on a four-year path to graduation. It will be at least six, if not more, and they might age out. But what we're doing while we're in those classes is we're giving them something. We're trying to catch them up to where English nine, they'd meet English nine, and then be able to be successful once they do age out.
Thank you so much. I know you are so busy, so we appreciate you being here today. It makes a big difference.
Thank you for the
Thank you for the very specific. Just thank you so much for sharing your very specific experiences. I think that's very important for the board as a whole to understand.
I also want to say, thank you. I know that Ms. Darinette Kofax and others have complimented the leadership of the division. You know, you've mentioned a lot of people who, you know, Steve and Rich and Sloan and many others, who kind of helped us begin this conversation and start this design work. But I have to tell you, to start something new in a school, it took the right leadership at the school level. So, I just want to tell you how much I appreciate these two principals and their willingness to say, "Hey, let's dig in. Let's get this. Let's figure it out. Let's work through it." And so, leadership at the school level, it would, we would not be as successful as we are today with this model if it weren't for these two ladies at the end of the table. So, thank you all for the way you think about things.
Because we have a lot of questions and are short on time, please do keep it to new comments if you can and questions. And we can always follow up with additional information. So, I have Sandy, followed by Ben, and then Elizabeth.
Thank you. I am very pleased to see where this program is going and to see it come to fruition. And I agree wholeheartedly with Dr. Garza that it took leadership, both at the central office level, but as well, especially at the school level. So, and thank you for all of you, for everything that you do. And thank you for being here today to give us your particular insights from having worked directly with all of the students. So, thank you. I did have several questions for you. Well, my first comment is about the Strategies for Success. I mean, I have visited both programs, and I, as well as going with Ms. Darinette Kofax to see some other programs in other cities. I do think that that's critical, and I'm so thrilled to see you put that. I mean, we know that at a kind of school like Stewart and at Lee, we have students who are coming in at a very basic level, where they need to understand what, what school is like, you know, what is school? And how, what is this school culture? So, I appreciate that, as well as the socio-emotional piece, which I agree is absolutely critical to this program as well. I did want to ask some specific questions. When we, you looked at the graduation rate on Slide, I believe it's Slide twelve. And that's been our experience to date. I realize we're in our first year. Do we have any projection or any particular goal in terms of what we, I mean, again, I realize we're talking with the very first year here, but do we have a goal on what are, what we would like to see that number be when this first cohort gets to senior year, or what we would expect?
Well, we would like to be our number at a hundred percent, right?
Of course.
Ninety-four, if we, if we say that ninety-four percent are on track to pass and get credits in English nine and government this year, then there's, you know, hopefully, that that number will hold or come close to it. So, I would hope that we would have ninety percent graduation rates.
For four-year or six-year, or some, something in between?
Possibly four. I would hope that we could do it in four. So, now, it depends on, depends on the math level. So, some students may need an extra year for math, so that might be five-year. But if they continue, if we continue along, it should be, and of course, they'll have to pass some SOL tests. So, that is something that will have to be, you know, each year. I think we have to really look carefully and perhaps put some more supports in place as we see how, you know, as we track students are doing.
One thing I
Oh, I was just gonna say, we can't help but move this number over time in a positive direction. Because as we stated before, the current structure doesn't allow for too much change here. This new model does allow for the, for the change. I really like the way you put that, gives them hope that they can graduate within four years for certain students. So, I think it'll improve.
And when you're talking about students who are graduating with forty-two or forty-five credits, that takes a tremendous amount of time to do. So, hopefully, that cuts way, way down on those.
And there's been national studies on other districts that have implemented a model similar to this. And their graduation rates went up anywhere from twenty to twenty-five points once they saw. So, you could automatically see, because of some of the other barriers, but nationally, when they did a study on similar, not exactly the same, but similar ones, there was at least twenty-point gains in graduation rates.
That's wonderful. That's wonderful to know. So, that gives us something to shoot for. I did want to talk a little bit about the older students and how we're dealing with those. I see that Stewart has close to a hundred of the older students. And I know one of our thoughts was to provide evening classes or late afternoon. And I gather that hasn't been as popular as we had hoped. Do you want to tell us a little bit about that, and if we are looking at enhancing that program?
We're certainly looking at advancing the programs so that we could have more day programming, because actually, more programming during the day, for example, transitionally, so high school, as opposed to the evening. Not that we would eliminate evening programming at all, but to recognize that students, that there are many students that would prefer programming during the day. And we may, if we have an option for them, for students that are over eighteen, that we could provide, because currently, we only have PIMIT is our only transitionally, so high school site for during the day.
Have we asked them why evening is, I guess, our thought was that students who might have to work would value that program, and I gather that hasn't happened. Have we asked them why?
Some of them are working at night, I would say. The other thing is they want the security blanket of being at school during the day and getting the meal. I will say, it is a challenge I hope that we fix. We do have a significant truancy problem with students who are over eighteen, and we spend significant efforts on those students when our efforts could be spent on those who have compulsory education. So, we have offered it. We have had some movement from our day program to the night transitional. But typically, when students balk, it is because they already have a job at night, or because they just want to be there during the day with their friends.
Okay, so it's largely, you think it's maybe
I think part of it's social.
Okay.
It is important to point out that we are minimizing the number of students that are eighteen years and older entering our base schools. So, if we look at the slide behind me, you can see that only, what is it, about forty, forty-five, forty-seven students have entered all of our high schools that are over age eighteen that are this year, this school year.
Oh, so then I
In previous years.
Well, so then I need some clarification on those ninety-six students that were listed as being at Stewart.
Because many of them started as age fourteen, fifteen, sixteen, seventeen, when they were not yet eighteen years old. Because many of them started as age 14, 15, 16, and 17, when they were not yet 18 years old.
So you wouldn't.
Or entered 18, excuse, I'm sorry. Or entered 18 in previous years, entered, entered FCPS in previous years as an 18-year-old. So we have slowed the, we have, we've definitely slowed the number of students.
I would say the majority of those kids at Stewart came into Stewart at age 18 or 19, before we were turning those students away and putting them in transitional night program.
Oh, I see. And so now that the new ones in that position would typically go to PIMIT or somewhere else?
Or to the nighttime transitional.
Or they're going, or they're attending in the evenings. As you can see, we've added 82 students this year at transitional between ages of 18.
Because I think, you know, there is an issue with having 22-year-olds, you know.
Yeah. And the last thing I would say on that is that there are students who can graduate. You know, English learners have a right to school up till age 22. So students that we've placed, those 38 students that we've placed that in grade 10 or higher have that chance to graduate within four years by the time they turn 22. So they have a legitimate reason to be there.
Right. If you want us to move, keep going, so.
I, I, I know, I know.
We had a teacher who, did you want to add something?
My name's Erin. I work at Lee. I'm the assistant principal that supervises ESOL. And one of the factors as to why some of these older kids that come to us and they want to be during the day is because they have childcare during the day. So that's a factor that we have to consider. So that's another thing to think about.
That's so, so providing some childcare in the evening might make a difference to them.
Well, I, I don't know if that's the answer as much as just the robust programming during the day because the established daycare system that they have is for their kids during the day.
I see. Okay. That's, that's, that's an important point. Thank you. So I just basically have one, one more question. And that's about the students that come into our schools at different times of year. And at least in the past, I know at Stewart and in the entire Stewart pyramid, we've gotten a significant number of students coming in in the spring, even in the late spring. So how are those, are those students still going into the newcomer program? And if so, how are they being incorporated when they come in at other times during the school year? And Lee may have that same issue as well.
Yes, we, I think we both have that issue. As of March 1, I think we had 111 new students that came and 56 of them were Level One students. So the program that we developed at the beginning of the year really looks nothing like our current program. Where we had teaming situations, we've had to decouple those teaming situations to create more sections. I don't know if Penny has had that same experience. We hired our second new ESOL teacher since the year opened in February. So for us, the way we've been able to deal with that is separating those teaming situations, creating new sections, and having those students enter into the program when they arrive.
So you start a new, a new section when you get enough?
Right.
Enough students to start a new section?
But they're only receiving audit credit, correct?
Well, that's the piece I was gonna say is.
Because we're too late in the year.
It's too late in the year for them to earn English Nine or Social Studies. So those students are auditing that class and they'll go into it for the full year the following year.
And is that the same way it's being handled at Stewart?
Yes, it's correct. So we continue to add those students, but they are on audit status. We're similar to Lee in that every day, we're getting new students and they're all Level One. So those Level One classes are very large. Kids are getting audit credits and they will need to sit that class for the entire next year in order to earn credit. And that would be no different than any other student that's coming in and not sitting in those courses, walking in the door.
I just think that's a challenge that we need to be aware of, that we do get a significant number of our newcomer students that, you know, they don't necessarily come September 8, you know, so.
And I think another challenge we had this year was just, we couldn't find enough teachers. So we hired the number of ESOL teachers that we could. And we built a few sections. Jessica started out the year not teaching anything. And we had a couple other situations. We were able to add an extra period for folks. So we've tried to deal with that the best that we can. We've done the same thing. Anytime we saw low seat numbers, where classes actually have turned out small in a team-taught setting, we collapsed that half, changed student schedules to get out of that section and that freed up another ESOL teacher for a period.
Well, that's great. Well, I'm glad you're able to have that flexibility because, you know, that's certainly, we need to be cognizant of that when we talk about staffing as well.
Thank you. So next up, we have Ben, Elizabeth, and Janie. And just do try to be concise so we can get through everyone.
I promise to be concise. Thank you. I'm gonna ask my questions as a bundle so you guys can respond to them as a package. I did want to say, though, I had the opportunity to visit with students in this program. And I thank you, Ms. Gross, for allowing myself and Ms. Evans to visit with them. The work they were doing was very powerful. I was able to actually sit in on an English class and a Government class and see, see how that was going. So I was very, very impressed with that. The staff were extremely, extremely dedicated and very impressive. So I thank you for all that hard work. And I was very, also very interested to see the metrics about student satisfaction. I think that those, those metrics might even be higher than some of the general education, general education populations, which I think is pretty cool. I did want to comment on the activities component. I think that's something that we don't emphasize maybe enough when we're discussing division-wide policy because we know that the social component of a student's education is one of the most important that they're going to get. So I'm happy to talk offline with you all about ways we can potentially bring in our student governments and student leaders in our schools to enhance that programming. You know, I know in my personal life, we, we had great attendance at some of our school events because we were advertising in Spanish and bringing those groups in and making them feel like they had a stake in the work that we were doing as a school. So I think that that's really important work that we can carry forward. My two questions are around our academic sequencing and the way that the electives are being used. And perhaps if you had observed any trends among your populations about the ways that those elective slots were being used, perhaps there was a CTE focus, an arts focus? Any, any perspective you could bring on that? And then finally, academic sequencing? Whether there was a way we could expand the sequencing model to other schools, you know, perhaps without providing the dedicated resources that came with this program?
I can speak to the elective question just briefly. A lot of our ESOL students are ending up in art electives. A lot of that has to do with where our teachers are at professionally in terms of being able to accommodate for English language learners in the curriculum. So, you know, on the master's schedule, I know Lee has probably had similar things. When we give teachers a common planning period, it does force a lot of English language learners into electives during the same period because all of their core teachers are off, similar to a middle school model. And so our students are kind of pocketed in a few places. Our theater teacher's done a tremendous job of working with English language learners. We know some places where our kids are not as successful. So I will say, from the elective standpoint, if I could have more art rooms built at Stewart, that would be fantastic because I'm tapped out in art space just because that is a place where our English language learners can be very successful. I don't know about electives at Lee.
Yeah, I think it's pretty similar. One of the things that we tried to do was really look at our elective teachers and kind of who had that right mindset. And then worked with them on, with our DSS on opening up seats so that they could get into those electives. One elective that we developed last year, actually in response to overcrowding and not having electives for seats available, was our orchestra teacher stepped up and she's teaching a violin course to all our, to a bunch of our Level One kids. And that has been phenomenally successful. They learn how to do presentation skills. They've learned several different songs. They put a concert on. So just being creative and thinking about who are your teachers with that right mindset? And then I guess the last piece of it is, for the teachers that maybe are struggling with that mindset that may have, as you were saying, groups of students because of the way the master rolls in their classes, we've been working directly with them to provide professional development, you know, to support them. And that seems to have really supported and helped our elective program and our elective teachers.
And to the second part of your question, the course sequence is being introduced at all schools next year.
Elizabeth?
I'm gonna start on the upside. First of all, probably about 18 months or so ago, Dr. Presidio, you and I had conversations about the 18-year-olds progressing, or 18-plus-year-olds progressing into the regular high schools. And the, the problem that created, so on the one side, you have the needs of those students, but on the other side, you have the rights of the other students to an education that, you know, is reasonably free from, you know, a 22-year-old sitting next to you in 10th grade. So I am thrilled that this is happening and that we are getting kids into the right programming. So that's the positive. The, the problem I have with a presentation like this is there is not a single dollar figure anywhere in this presentation. There is nothing to quantify for me as an executive policymaker what this means in terms of, especially when we just had, had a workshop on the budget where we basically didn't identify anything, where the costs are and how that relates to cost avoidance. I often talk about how much things cost is what we talk about, but we never talk about what they save. So I have nothing contextually to understand that, can we go to the last, the next to the last slide? They're not, they weren't numbered in my presentation, so I don't know. Nope. This one. So I'm assuming the last slide, can you just actually flip to the last slide? That is a subset of the previous slide? Or they're in addition to?
No, this is a subset.
This is a subset. So we can go back to the, so we can go back to the previous slide. And so for the two sets of students that we're talking about today, Lee and Stewart, that's 277 students, 277 students. We're, we were just talking about what the staffing ratios are in some of our classrooms. We're talking about what the floor is or what the ceiling is in some of our classrooms. And I don't know what we're spending on 277 students. I don't know what the staffing ratios are. I don't know where we are on the federal reimbursement request to our congressmen and women on assistance with unaccompanied minors. I don't understand where we are on things like transportation, the grade level progression of these students, what, why we're not doing. And Mr. Moon brought up, you know, we've got German immersion, Japanese immersion, Spanish immersion, French immersion. Why this model and not English immersion? And the reason I say that is we've been, some of Dr. Garza's listening tours and I've held community events where people say, you know what? I came to this country and I learned English through immersion, not through, basically kind of being sequestered from, from peers. And so this is nice, but I don't understand how this informs us as policymakers in terms of what does this cost to educate 277 18 to 22-year-olds? And that changes the conversation when we get to things like our legislative package. Do we need to be having a different focus in our legislative package? And do we have a disproportionate burden than the rest of the Commonwealth where we can highlight to our state and federal legislators that we are the number two recipient of unaccompanied minors in the United States of America? And this right here is the disproportional cost that is quantifiable. And you, you don't have to take it down to a student level, but you can say, and, and for example, one of the things that was highlighted was that this is great because we've gone from 54 suspensions to 32 suspensions. But what's been the Level One, apparently we've changed the name now, English learners, whatever the correct term is, what's been the makeup difference? So I don't know that 54 to 32 is necessarily proportional in terms of, we have a lot more students who are needing a lot more services. So maybe it's right, maybe it's exponentially better. See, it's the difference of a data point versus a data point in context. And so I'm, I'm a little frustrated as what I'm supposed to take away as a business perspective, as a education policy perspective, as a finance and budget perspective on how this is really apples to apples in terms of what's the cost savings? If we are getting these kids across graduation and, and creating a cost savings there, what is that?
First of all, this presentation wasn't necessarily to, you want, did you want to run with it first? Okay. First of all. Okay, first of all. Whether you agree or disagree, the federal law does require that we provide English language services. Okay? That's no ifs, ands, or buts were required by law to provide these services. Okay? That's number one. Secondly, this program, we're presenting to you all because we had brought to you all before that we wanted to pilot a different kind of program that we knew that the current program we have at our high schools, we had to do something different. It was my impression at that time that you all wanted us to report back to you where we were and what was going to happen into the future. We're not asking for additional dollars for this program. We are taking current dollars and using them in different ways. That's why this model, this cohort model, that's why we're suggesting this model works when you have a preponderance or a larger number of ESL, English language learners in your school because you have enough staff to use that staff in a different way. Now, I'm not gonna suggest, because these two principals can tell you, they could use a lot more staff than what we currently have. I mean, ask any of our principals on any program. But this program is budget neutral. We're not adding additional dollars. We're just suggesting that we do our work in a different way. Now, with that said, you all have, as one of the program studies of program evaluations that is under, being undergone right now, is an ESOL overall program study. And they will bring forward to you how much we're spending on ESOL programming. So, I mean, we can certainly provide that to you. You may even know right off the top of your head how much we're spending on a yearly basis on ESL programming, English language programming. Maybe Kristen has it handy, but that's, that's coming up.
Dr. Garza, I want to get back to the, the question here of this expansion. And again, I'm sorry, the slides in the presentation don't have slide numbers. Can we go to the, the page that has the medium programs and the small programs? So the, the suggested expansion? Yep, nope, that one. So you're telling me you're gonna expand a pilot program that serves limited numbers of students at very high levels of service across, on the other slide, all those different squares? And it's not gonna cost a dime?
That's, that's correct.
That's correct because it's just.
Because, because, here's why. Because what we're changing.
That's just amazing.
Okay, well.
Ms. Schultz, we have an answer for you. We have an answer for you.
The reason why it is cost-neutral is because all we're doing is changing the classes that the students are taking at these schools. We are, they now take ESOL One, ESOL Two, ESOL Three. They're going to take English Nine and ELD to replace what they were taking as different courses. They're not, there's not any additional resources that the schools are doing. We're just changing the classes.
But you have the same level of staffing. You have six to nine ESOL teachers for, for how many students? I don't know how many stu-, 20 to 50 students at every single one of those schools.
There's six to nine, I just, all the 20 to 50 students are just the Level One students. The six to nine teachers serve all of the English learners, all of the ESOL students at those schools. So we just named the Level One because those are our neediest students and those are the students that will enter into the new courses.
Okay, I, I, I just don't understand then. If this is true, then why did we have such a huge leap in the cost of our Level One services in this budget? See, we, we can't have, we can't have a both. We, we either have a massive increase in the Level One services or we're able to provide all of these services and it doesn't cost any money.
Okay, what you're saying is a little nuanced, okay? What you just said was a little nuanced. We do have a, have a formula that's, there's a weighted formula that we can say, a Level One student costs this, a Level Two student costs this. And there's staffing associated with that. We're saying that we could, we, if we didn't do anything we just did this year, we would still have the same number of Level One students. Same, I mean, and there was an increase, a big increase. Level Two, Level Three, the cost would have still been the same for us. The cost did go up because we had more Level One students.
But you're saying we didn't get any more staff? I mean, I'm, I'm sorry, I cannot reconcile the fact that you're saying that we had more students and you're saying we have the same number of staff and we're delivering different programming with the same level of staff. But we can't be having the same level of staff if, in fact, we provided more funding because we have more students. Therefore, we have more staff.
Let me say it a different way to see if I can, and someone can help me articulate this. I appreciate it. But this is the deal. What we're suggesting is that the numbers of students as they go up, level one, level two, level three, th- those do increase our cost. This program itself does not increase our cost. I just said it.
We, 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 that has got to be part of, that has to be part of the articulation of what we're doing and that this is how we in a budget pinch are, are making wise use of our dollars on a going forward basis, is that we're restructuring. And not only are we not costing more, what are we saving? What is the, what is the, what is the end vision of a program like that going to save us because we're going to graduate more kids, we are going to be more employable, there, it, that's where this information becomes helpful in context. And I still maintain that if we are not pressing both Richmond and our federal legislators for more money, then that is again, a second revenue stream where we are tight, I mean, the noose is tightening around our neck and we've got to get some more money. And so we've got to renew with vigor the money because I think that we are disproportionately affected compared to the rest of the divisions in the Commonwealth.
Thank you, Elizabeth. Good point. Go ahead.
If I could just agree with Ms. Schultz for, for a second, I, I, I do think we could do a better job of capturing the cost avoidances here. Uh, because for example, with this program, if we're going to graduate students in four versus seven years, that's three years of edu-, yeah, of opportunity costs that we could capture and demonstrate. Now, we haven't attempted to do that yet because we're not even one academic year into the program.
Over time, I think we can.
But over time, we can demonstrate that and it will be significant cost savings to the division. That's right. I agree.
Percent.
Sorry.
Yeah, but I think, I, I think we can, I think we can try to estimate those kinds of things going forward. And I think it's a good point that Ms. Schultz makes.
Appreciate it. Okay, uh, we're going to keep going, Janie, Megan, Pat, and let's please do, be concise. Thank you.
Okay, the point that was just made is critical and what's an amazing change is changing the content of the courses that you are offering. Um, this, it's this piece that is a sea change and I'm fascinated by it. It had, you know, I, I just, I, I celebrate your success and, and your vision for knowing that this is what you had to do because we've never done this before. Um, so thank you all very much. Um, I'm also very pleased to hear some of your other, uh, your arts teachers and performance, I, you know, big supporter there. Tremendous impact for these kids in their ability to, to speak, to be a part of the schools. And I know sort of a lot of the drama stuff that, um, some of your teachers do with these kids, I've seen it, it is just amazing. And, uh, project-based learning on the spot is what a lot of these kids need, appreciate. So, um, I'm very pleased and I know we are very excited to see this at Herndon High School. Um, and I can see that this I'm sure is, is transferable to any language, you know, any future thing that comes down the road, we tend to reflect whatever's going on in the rest of the world. So thank you very much, um, very impressive.
Megan, then Pat, then Karen.
So I, I want to share my colleague's enthusiasm for this. Uh, Ms. Kofax probably remembers, she and I were in San Diego when, at the NSBA, um, School Board Conference where we saw this presented from a school in Texas and both of us were very energized by what we saw. The statistics were phenomenal that their students were graduating at the same rate as, uh, white and Asian students that, I mean, absolutely closing, not narrowing, but closing the achievement gap. So for, you know, Ms. Kofax who represents this community and Ms. Evans especially, that you then, you know, took this initiative with Dr. Garza's leadership and have us where we are, I couldn't be more excited. And I think it's, um, just also a great reminder of when we go to these national conferences and we get to learn from school systems around the country who are struggling, uh, with similar challenges, um, just look what the 10th largest school system can learn and benefit from. Uh, so I, I think this just speaks to true leadership and vision and again, just another reason why we love Dr. Garza's leadership because she's continued to say, how can we do it better than what we understand it to be? And, and a great team behind her, right next to her, surrounding her. Um, I do want to just touch on something real quick because, uh, I do appreciate what, um, Ms. Schultz, again, trying to be a champion of our school system and, and earlier when we talked about the budget, the, the hits that we take publicly sometimes about the things we do and so, uh, you know, us being able to kind of get in front of the message allows us to be proactive with it versus in a defensive posture. So, um, and I know Ms. Corbett Sanders, thank you too for talking about, you know, we don't want to inject business into a public school setting, but we also know sometimes a business model can be our best friend when we want the community and taxpayers to get excited about what we do. But there was this, the PowerPoint slide that talked about the newcomer supports. And it, again, very exciting, shows you the blocks and talked about the cohort models, strategies for success, there we go, right there. And that's one where, and then the next slide, which is central office supports, but I don't want you to switch it, just keep it there because that's an important visual. This is where we could end up having a misunderstanding, um, in the community where people would see these amazing supports and go fabulous, wow, I can only imagine how much that costs to be able to provide that level of support and services. So I was understanding what you were saying, Dr. Garza, which is we estimate how much it costs to have a level one student and then we do the formula. And you can either do it in a traditional model, which hasn't been so successful, and you're just spending money well intent, with well intentions or good intentions, but not the success. Or you take the same amount of money that it would be spending in a traditional way, but you do it in an innovative way. And that's what this is. So we'll just need to make sure, I think, that we, again, maybe it's the walking the cat backward to help people understand that, you know, this is what it costs to do a level one student. And now look at what we did when we, we redesigned the way we deliver instruction. And that might be a way to tee it up and help people understand that. Um, I did want to just, uh, say for maybe a next step, because I know, um, Ms. Palchuk, we're under very tight timeline here, but I, some good questions were raised. Um, project momentum and our, um, ESOL pilot program that we're here, seeing today, um, how these two together are be, are sort of interfacing and/or, uh, aligning with our overall closing the achievement gap plan? I think a crosswalk of that might be helpful as sort of follow-up information for us as a board and for the community who's going to be wondering, okay, how do each of the pieces come together? So that would be good. And then, uh, in terms of, and I apologize if I missed this, this, the, trying to bring this to our other seven schools that you showed, uh, is that something for the fall of 2016? Okay, fantastic.
They're meeting with principals right now. One, one by one, school by school.
Excellent. And then, um, in terms of middle schools, because we know we have those students in our middle schools, uh, again, not necessarily for today, but is that in the, the thinking of how we can try and bring this to our middle schools as well?
Yeah, it's definitely in the works. In fact, we're working on a, a version of Strategies for Success, for example, um, that course for middle schools. Uh, but we're, our office is, we're working with middle schools as well on how do best serve the newcomers.
Great, thank you. So again, I'm happy with my other question to just be a next step. And, uh, otherwise, just thank you again for helping us, um, end up achieving one of our most essential goals, which is that for each and every child to find their success. It's really, really wonderful.
I, I might also want to remind the board, you know, I think the points about adding at the beginning that this is a budget cost neutral, you know, we'll, we'll go back and add that. Uh, I do want to remind the board in the budget process, in order for us to add positions of any sort, we have to actually bring it to the board. So, you know, the assumption is anything that we're doing that's innovative, we're doing it with our current money unless you all authorize us to spend money in a different way or to add positions in a different way. So, but.
Hi, great. Yeah, just briefly, I'm so glad this is coming to South Lakes High School in my neck of the woods, so let me know what I can do to help. Uh, anything, I'm sure there's not much I could do, but if you need school board member support up there, I'd be happy to give it. Um, I was going to ask a question about resources as well, so I'm glad we sort of went through that, that this is just better use of the money that we already have. It's odd, when I'm out in the community, I do hear this weird question sometimes, well, you all have a gold-plated ESOL system. I'm like, what, having been in a school and seen how hard ESOL teachers work and how their, you know, their resources are not there, and then knowing we have this really almost shameful graduation rate for our ESOL high school kids, I think, where, where do you get the idea that we have a gold-plated ESOL system? But there's a little bit of disconnect, I guess, among some people in the community. So I think it does help to probably put it up front that, you know, we're not spending any more money, we're just spending it more wisely. So I had just a couple of questions for the, for the teachers, if you all don't mind. Um, I wondered, and I've, my experience is only in elementary, but, um, I know that it was always a challenge for the ESOL teachers to find and sometimes create materials and, um, that are, you know, at the right level for the students, especially when you're doing so much in the content area. And then the other question I had, I noticed in your, um, survey, you talked about higher expectations for the students. And I just kind of maybe wanted you to elaborate on, on that a little bit. How do you think that this provides higher expectations for them?
Hi. I'm Megan Sherrill, I'm the high school ESOL instructional support teacher. Um, my specialist, Michelle Campelia started at Herndon today, so just me. Um, so in terms of the curriculum, this has probably been one of our greatest challenges. First of all, as ESOL teachers, to understand the English nine standards. So we've worked really closely with our English counterparts in instructional services to really have a deep understanding of, um, sorry, I wasn't prepared to speak, I'm all nervous. Um, to really have a deeper understanding of what those standards were getting at because we were always teaching based on standards, however, in ESOL land, and I was at Herndon for four years prior to this position, um, we kind of looked at the standards and we let it guide us. Now, um, we're really having to have an in-depth understanding of that. So for our curriculum, finding resources that can cover the standards at the different levels, so at level one through three is, is a real challenge and it's something that we continually work on. We're working with a lot of different publishing companies, Saddleback Publishers is one of the companies, they make high-quality, high-interest books, but written at like a first, second grade level. Um, so instead of having, you know, um, my little dog for an 18-year-old, you can have something more about soccer or something that would be high interest, but that we could still teach the standards through. So we're continually working, um, looking for resources. That's one of our, our biggest goals is to provide high-quality resources within the curriculum and also at a level that the students can access depending on their English language development at this point in time. Um, in terms of writing the curriculum, we do have a team that meets once a week. It, uh, represents 14 of the high schools in the county with ESOL teachers. We'll be meeting tomorrow. Um, and we divide up the lessons, we take a look at how can we cover all the standards that we need to cover for the students, and then we create lessons with learn lesson plans, PowerPoints, notes, um, everything that the teachers need to deliver the content and have it delivered with fidelity and hopefully successful. We're constantly getting feedback from the teachers at Lee and Stewart, so we present the lessons to them and then they get back to us and say, you know, this is what worked well, this is what needs improvement, this text worked, this text did not. Um, so this summer, we have a lot of curriculum projects. One of them will be to revise the English nine curriculum before we put it out to all the schools next year and also to create the English 10 for English learners curriculum that will be piloted at Lee and Stewart next year.
And I would just add that, um, as far as holding students to a higher standard, um, and this might actually go back to a little bit about how it doesn't cost extra money. So our previous program and what's happening at most schools in the county is the students take, you know, kind of a level one literature class, two content classes, a world concepts class that's based on world history, and a concept science class that's sort of based off of biology, but they're all elective credits for all of those classes for two years that the students take. Those classes now don't exist for us. So literature turns to English nine, content turns to ELD. There's no science, concept science this year, so that's where our strategies class can fit in. So you're just trading one class for another kind of class. But because they were elective credits, even though if we're in a world history one class or a literature class or a concepts clients, concept science class, and we're looking at the standards for biology or world history, it's an elective class, we're not really held to the same pace, we don't have an SOL at the end of it. So a lot of times the teachers might be able to spend a lot more time on a certain area than they might in other areas. I also found that, you know, we have a great Blackboard site that has a lot of curriculum force in the old programming, but from my school to another school, we might see the implementation differently. And not every school had exactly the same kind of programming if you were offering the same kind of classes, uh, just because people might have kind of pet things that they work on. But with this, I can see how this is going to be then streamlined across the county. I mean, English nine standards are English nine standards, government standards are government standards, you can't really play with that and pick and choose what you want to cover. So, um, the pace is very fast, we don't have time. Again, I mentioned the strategies class, we have, uh, that's where all of the, what do I go see my counselor about, what is graduation, how do I get prepared for WEDA on a computer now? All of that goes to that class so that it really is every single day in English nine and government, they are very focused on curriculum. Whereas in, in the past, you might have heard them problem solving other things.
And I'll just jump in on that a little bit and add that with the English nine and the government standards, the teacher can say, in the past, what happened with level one, if they remained a level one, they had to repeat level one. They repeated the same classes year after year until they were able to move up. Um, now, if they pass English nine, they can take English 10 at like a level one, two. And that allows them to move on even if their English proficiency didn't increase that much. They're able to show, all right, well, you passed this, you showed mastery of these standards, even if your WEDA level, your ELP level doesn't show that you've improved, you passed this class and you're moving on and you can see that on your, on your schedule. Before, if you were in ESOL one and it was an elective, if you repeated that as an ESOL two, it's still an elective, it doesn't get you anywhere. So what they can see is if I pass this class, I can move on and I'm that much closer to graduation, so that high expectation is there.
Thank you. Um, we have Karen, Jeanette, and then Tom.
Congratulations and thank you for all you're doing. This is obviously very important to, uh, Ms. Darinak, Kofax, and myself, given that four of the schools are in the Mount Vernon and Lee area. Um, and so we really appreciate the focused attention that you all are providing our students because they are all of our students. I would be very interested in knowing a couple of things. One is, um, the pathways to success. Here seems to be pathways to success of completing high school. Are we doing something to provide opportunities for the pathways to success at Northern Virginia Community College, um, which is a, uh, program that many of our students that are not ELL learners are, um, taking advantage of in our high schools? Uh, additionally, I would be very interested in knowing whether or not you have, um, teachers that are teaching both within the newcomer school and then also other courses in the high schools? Or are they really a focused staff within us, within the school, providing these, um, services and opportunities for our kids? And then the last, and this may be premature, is there was a bill that was passed in the General Assembly on assessments, which allows for WEDA te- for WEDA testing and, um, alternative assessments. And how does that fit in with what you're doing here? Thank you.
Okay, so, um, the first one I'll take as a, uh, thank you, I think that's a great idea and that's something for us to work on, the pathways to success at Nova. Um, that's not something we're currently doing, but I think that's a great, um, opportunity there. Secondly, uh, to your last part, um, and then I can let Molly answer about teachers, but to the last part, it's something that we're working on for alternative assessments for English learners. Um, that's at the 11th grade level, so we're not there yet with our current cohort of students at ninth grade. Um, but, um, we look forward to offering alternative assessments at that, um, for the English end of course. Could be WEDA, could be Workkeys, there are other, there are a number of different options and so we'll choose, um, wisely, I guess, in Fairfax County.
As far as teachers go, um, so our teachers do, uh, participate both in newcomer programming and in our kind of standard programs. We have a teacher, for example, who teaches strategies for success for two periods and then she co-teaches biology for three periods. Or we have a teacher who does English nine for level two and she also team teaches in world history one. and she also team teaches in world history one. We have level four teacher who also does level two ELD, so they do, both, both.
Ms. Corbett Sanders, we were able to build our program at Stewart. Our newcomer teachers just teach in the newcomer program. So, we built our model with 100 students, so they have five sections of 20-plus each. So, if you teach Strategies for Success, they have five. English nine, the teacher has five, ELD, she has five. Our math teachers do work in both, and of course, the elective teachers, there are elective teachers who have newcomers, and then they also have other courses as well. So, it just depends on the size of the program, whether they're based solely in newcomers or work outside of it as well.
Jeanette, then Tom, and then I'll close.
Okay, two good questions, thank you, I've enjoyed this. As way of comparison, just to help us, you know, really share our work and brag about it, because I think we should, in slide 11, is there a data point that I can see to, I think it's 11, they weren't numbered, I think that's what it says. What is the percent of level one and two in Fairfax County not enrolled in these pilot program for passing English nine and the social studies course?
I don't have, I don't have the exact, well, there are no students at any other high schools that are taking Engle, no, level one or two.
Okay, so that doesn't even exist.
It does not exist.
Okay.
Right, right, only these two schools this year. Next year, it will be at all schools.
Okay, excellent. And then, for the smaller program, probably more specifically than the medium-sized program, is depending on, it just sounds like there's amazing resources that are being created and used with the funds that we have. If we're seeing in the smaller programs that we're not able to do the same great work for these students in an effort to give them everything they would need, is there going to be conversation of people placing them in one of the existing larger programs for efficiency and effectiveness for those students?
I guess if our need was that great, we could do that. But what we are doing right now, I mean, it's a great question, and we'll know more about that as we meet with each individual school. So, I think when we, we're currently, our office, we're meeting with each school to talk about what their specific needs are. We just met with Falls Church and Langley, I believe, this past week. So, two very different demographics, two different schools with different needs, perhaps in this programming. So, staffing is number one on all the principals' minds, of course, and so, it's something that we look at and see, how can they use existing staffing so that they can provide everything that their students might need?
Yeah, thank you. Great presentation, and thanks for fielding a ton of questions. The first, I have just a few quick questions. The first question I have is, can you just talk about the student-to-teacher ratio that you have in the schools, in the, in the school within a school?
It started out probably 15 to one, and we're in the low twenties to mid twenties as the year's gone on. So, the class size now is definitely over 20 to one. At Stewart, we did build our program, knowing that we were going to get level ones coming in. Of course, they keep coming. We had hoped we would have had a little bit more of a lull, which we saw last year, but it has been a very steady stream, and we have not lost students. So, we started out approximately 15 to one in our level ones, and we're probably 23, 24 at this time.
Yeah, and I'd say we started out around 12, 12 to one, and we're at 18 to one.
So, so is that, was the initial staffing level set based on what you thought was the right class size? Or was it based on the number of students you had versus teachers? And I guess the next question is, is that when you, when you saw the increase in your class size, did you see a corresponding decline in the educational success of the students?
So, I'll start out with the first question, which was that we built our program, we identified the students that met the criteria of being in US schools for less than a year. So, that's where we got our targeted number from. I don't know what you guys did at Lee.
Yeah, we just, same thing, and then we looked at our level ones and looked at our level twos and saw that we could create a better cohort if we used both levels versus you had a high level one.
And as we've had more students come in, we've had to veer away from the model a little bit. So, early on, the kids had very specific courses they went into. We are very tight on electives at Stewart right now. So, there's places where we have had to create other sections to be able to meet the needs of those kids. But I would say the challenge has been more on the teacher, having to deal with the class size. Also, from a facility standpoint, we do put our ESOL classes typically in those smaller rooms, and so, they are busting at the seams from a facility standpoint. We use our larger classrooms for our gen ed that run closer to 30, and the smaller classrooms are for ESOL, so that is definitely one challenge. I think it inhibits their ability to really have the more active learning go on, just because desks and chairs are so tight trying to accommodate all the students.
So, I guess, so the second part of my question, though, in terms of the educational success of the students, did you have any notable change with the rise in the class sizes?
I don't, but don't increase the class size to 23, is that what you're asking?
Yeah, that's...
I'm afraid.
It's actually not, not what I'm getting at. What I'm, what I'm trying to drive at is, we're going to, we're going to roll out the pilot to other high schools. So, what would be the projected, and I know you have planning, what are you guys planning on at the, at these new schools? And then, I guess, related to that is, how do you do your projections for new, new arrivals?
So, the first part is that we do, our plan is for level one and two students to be staffed at 16, anywhere between 16 and 20 to one. As Deidre and Penny shared, they try and start with less in each class, knowing that, and based on projections, based on what we've seen year in, we look at how many students come in in January, how many students come in in February, December, so that we have an idea, and it's never perfect, but we have an idea of, oh, approximately this many students may arrive in February, so that we'll know what to build toward. And the principals and the DSSs and the teachers at each school, it's a little bit different, but they do the best they can at that. So, 16 to 20 is, anywhere between 16 and 20 is what we will plan for each school next year. That would be the starting point.
Okay. And so, when you're planning on the new arrivals that come in after the New Year's, how do you come up with that projection? Is there some, is there state data that comes into you or something?
The only thing, we, we keep the enrollment data monthly at entry assessment. So, we have, I just got a report today of how many students by, by level entered Fairfax County Public Schools in February. So, we have monthly projections, so we can look at those year by year to get an idea, and each year is a little bit different, but to get an idea of about how many students are coming. And we can look at where they go. It's not perfect science, but that's what we can do.
Okay, thank you.
Tom, I think you've got somebody who wants to...
So, one of the things to think about, though, is our traditional staffing model that we do use, where principals go, and that, that's a process. But one of the things, if we are able to kind of consider something where we are aware that these numbers are going to grow, and they're going to get bigger, and those things are going to happen, it's a known quantity. How much and how fast, we don't, but we do know it's going to grow. So, to use that traditional staffing model that we do use is harder on schools. So, one of the ways we were getting around, going to get around it next year, hopefully, is, for instance, Ms. Evans and I are team teaching a class, but we're both dual-certified, and I can peel off and take 10 or 12 kids. And then, I'm the class that everybody loads up when the kids come. So, I think it's, I think it may be advantageous for us to consider looking at our staffing model as a, when we do look at ESOL. And then, the other thing is to just really forward think, especially if you take this out full-scale, forward think around the idea of, you got to team people up, they've got to be dual-certified, and they've got to be ready to peel apart. And the facilities aspect, when I've got them in a, a lot of number, you know, a lot of kids, part of it, for instance, they went into this really beautiful closet. That sounds awful, it's not, it's lovely, except the door needed to be fixed, like it was a regular door. So, some facilities things that you'd never think of, right? I can't have a regular door, I need the door at the glass. So, there's some things that we could kind of maybe forward think about, you know? Thank you.
That's very helpful, I guess, and this is sort of a theme for me, I guess, today, it's that I'm thinking out in terms of the, the next fiscal year. I mean, we're dealing with this year's costs, but I'm trying to think through, like, what do we have to look forward to, and, and how do we plan for that?
So, before I go to Illyon, I haven't had a chance to speak. So, my first question's a little follow-up on what you were asking, Tom, is, so we are looking at 2017 budget. What would be the negative effects of our making changes to the staffing formulas for ESOL? I know they're on there. And then, I know it's, you haven't presented that, but what would high school changes, what kind of effect would they have if we're able to change some of our diploma requirements to our program? Are we looking at that, or are we waiting for that?
So, we actually had tentatively on the agenda the high school diploma pathways presentation for later. And if we remove some of the graduation requirements, it just provides more course-taking flexibility for students. So, not only would they have more opportunities to take classes like Strategies for Success, also taking other substitute courses that would be based on their future career interests to meet graduation requirements. So, it'd be a real benefit, I think, to our, to our English language learners. But I don't know if we're going to be able to get to that presentation today or not, so...
But just to reiterate, if we were to up our ESOL staffing formulas, it would have a pretty negative effect on this program?
Yeah, I, I mean, when you talk about the class sizes that we're already staffing at, they're really outside of the ratios that we would prefer them to be at. We want small class sizes so that we can differentiate the instruction to students as, as, you know, Mr. Moon kind of alluded to earlier in our discussion. So, when we start to see those numbers increase, 20, 22, 24, those are levels that make it really, really difficult for our teachers that are doing excellent work to personalize and individualize instruction to students. So, we want to keep them at the staffing ratios that we set. And in terms of projections, we work very closely with both the Financial Services Office and facilities each year to create projections that are based on historical averages and trends, and they're actually usually quite close. Sometimes, when you see fluctuations in those numbers, it's because of other issues that we might see with migration patterns and things that are happening in foreign countries. But we usually get pretty close to those, and we work really hard with our other departments to do it. But we want to be staffed at the ratios that we set in, in our budget.
Thank you, sorry, the last thing is a comment, a little bit related to what Ms. Hoff was saying. For our small, medium, and I guess the, the larger programs, I do hope the next step will be to train more of the staff who are not working within the program, so our students do have more access to electives, especially career technical education. I do think that's definitely what I've heard from a lot of our ESOL teachers, is giving our students more opportunities and training our staff on how to support them in their classrooms. Okay, Illyon, final comments?
Just, just one quick comment to our teachers who came out and shared their stories with us. Thanks for, thanks for coming out today and, and teaching our ESOL kids. As I remember, again, going back to my high school days, the very first book that my ESOL teacher, ESL back then, gave me to read was, believe it or not, The Catcher in the Rye. Even though my English level was very low, as far as my intellectual curiosity, my emotional needs, you know, she thought that I should be reading that book. I had to perhaps, you know, look up every other word, but I was fascinated by what American teenagers were going through in that book. Thank you.
Well, thank you all so much. I also was a younger ESOL student when I came in. Such a fabulous teacher that she was brought back from retirement, but has finally retired. So, I do appreciate you bringing, you know, excellent staff. And if there is anything we can do to support you and to build a community input and partnerships as well to support our students, please let us know.
Thank you.
Great job, appreciate it.
We might observe that some of these teachers are in this part of their career that we so much want to keep. Good examples. So, the next work session, then?
World Language, Basil, and such material.
No, we have the...
They, they announced that they were going to flip them.
Okay.
Going to World Language? Thank you.